So you don't have the floor yet, but when you do, you can move a motion to adjourn. So if you want to join the speakers list, you're welcome to do that. Counselor Ostroff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I don't have a gun. I have been raised in the country and certainly am very familiar with guns and hunters. And when I first heard about this motion, I thought, yeah, it seems like a good idea. And then I've done some research on it and consulted with a considerable number of people. And so it's really, it's become a big, a big, a big topic. And I just really want to commend the members of the public that came here today to speak so well and so clearly and so committed to it. And it's really, really impacted me. And I, obviously, we all got a lot of emails and a lot of passion there. And, you know, I can't support this motion. And I actually believe, like, maybe kind of like Counselor Chappell said, someone said it's, to me, it's, you know, should be withdrawn. It doesn't belong here. And I just want to comment on some of the lines that impacted me of what I've read and what I've heard. And so these are not all my words, but, you know, this is an emotional response that stems from a lack of information. And if anything, that's true because I've learned so much about this. And it's out of context. And this is not the place for this, in my opinion. I would recommend that we defer it anyways for greater discussion. But I struggle with it because as we've heard over and over, it targets law-abiding citizens. And that should be something we'd be really concerned about. And I've been, from what I've read, the current law is enough. It's enough. It does the job. Our time is better spent as a council on other issues. I believe in that, too. The Bill 71 doesn't make us any safer, and neither does this motion. I would be prepared, if we're going to lose this, to make an amendment that it would be exempt from the rural areas. That would be the least I would like to see, but I got to think about that. You know, at least it's not, if it's an urban-centric thing, then why are we impacting rural communities so heavily? That's a big concern for me. Again, at first, I was, I learned a lot in this. And so the comments that made that it's an attack on our private property, and also someone made a point, it's an attack on our country's heritage. That bothers me a lot. And so I have spoken to police officers who are also sport gun enthusiasts. They are hunters, and they've really, really showed me the passion that they have for their hobby. And so I have a problem with it. I have a rifle club in my district, and the resounding answers, or the resounding plea from them is that we say no to this. And so I'm asking my fellow councillors to think about this, to consider if they came in here saying it's obvious that we should support this. It's not obvious. I'm asking you to reconsider it because, for the messages that we've heard tonight. And I know that it could be close, but I think that there's enough here to say that, you know, let's just not continue with it. I think it's going to be too late anyways, but it's out of context for me. It's misguided, and it's not going to have an impact. And I'm asking everyone, those that would support it, to change their minds tonight for the reasons we've been given. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Hill.
Thank you, Your Worship. I enjoyed a long career as an educator, and over the years, I watched in horror as gun violence in schools went from bringing kind of an incredibly isolated event to a common occurrence, mainly in the United States, but increasingly in Canada as well. In order to combat this threat, we began to practice drills in our schools where we teach students what to do when there's an active shooter on campus. Our kids, Kingston kids, who undertake this training at least three times a year, forty-two times over the course of their school years, have become experts in self-preservation. And I'm going to show you an example of what the kids are learning, just a short clip.
All right, so coming along to today's team building event. Today, we're going to be learning what to do in the event of an active shooter. We're going to bring in a special guest. She's actually an expert on this, and she's going to be leading our team building events. Okay. Everyone says, "Sure, you'll be dead." When you talk out loud, make sure you tell where you are and where you're hiding. Sometimes we're moving, we can stay quiet as long as, so we all remember. You can try and protect your friends by pushing the tables and chairs against the doors. You also have to put a piece of paper over the door windows so they can't see you. You can't cry. It gives away your position and your hiding spot. And if you're in the bathrooms, you have to stand from the toilet seat and crunch down so they can't see your feet and they can't see your head, so they don't know that you're there. I have some things that could help the police. For example, when you hear a lot of bangs like, "Bang, bang, 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 bang", they should know that you're down the hall. Or if you hear louder ones like, "Bang, bang, bang", you can be right outside your door. If the shooter comes in the room, screaming won't do anything. You'll have to try and fight back. If you can't escape, bring a top emergency window escape plan, where you have to break a window, but fold over the frame and climb through. Our teacher used to sing a song to make it easy to remember. Lock down, lock down, let it stop, like, lock the doors and stay inside. Come, drop down, don't make a sound, and don't cry or we'll be down.
Continuing to put our kids through this trauma is unacceptable. Having our citizens at risk from gun violence when they sit in a restaurant or take a walk on a summer's evening is unacceptable. Being at risk of gun violence when sitting in a house of prayer in a classroom, attending a concert, attending a parade, or even picking up a coffee at a local outlet is unacceptable. I hear the concerns of legitimate and responsible citizens who make up the vast majority of gun owners in Canada, and I am sorry that this may impact on their hobby. However, their interest in a hobby simply does not come close to our interests as politicians in protecting public safety. This is especially true considering the carnage that happens on our streets in ever-increasing frequency. Our police chiefs, doctors, first responders, family advocates, health units, mental health advocates, and educators all support a ban on assault weapons and handguns because they see firsthand the tragic outcomes of guns in the wrong hands, in the hands of angry young men, in the hands of children, violent spouses, and emotionally desperate people, and yes, of course, also in the hands of criminals. According to Natasha Saunders at the Hospital for Sick Kids in Toronto, who conducted a study on this, almost every day in Ontario alone, someone under the age of 25 is shot. On average, 355 young people every year in this province. In 2005, after a series of incidents, Ontario moved to ban pit bulls because they were deemed to pose a threat, mainly to our children. Clearly, this impacted many dog owners, most of whom are very likely responsible pet owners. However, the decision was made because of a pressing public safety issue. Well, I don't know the stats, but I can tell you that there are far more children shot in Ontario than were ever attacked by a pit bull. And even so, we can't seem to find the collective will to respond in the most obvious way to resolve the issue of death and injury by firearms.
Thirty seconds.
The time to act is long past. There are so many weapons, both legal and illegal, in Canada that this problem will continue well into the future. But I hope that someday we'll be able to bring an end to the days where the most memorable and searing image a child has of a lesson at school is how to avoid being shot. That day will only come to pass by taking the first step, and this is only and barely a first step. I hope the councillors will support this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you. I want to thank everyone who wrote me and our council colleagues about gun control. Thank you to those who presented here. Particularly, thank you to my residents in my district for sharing your perspective. This is an issue that we discussed at the door during the election and now over email. I appreciate your engagement, care, and consideration. It's a debate that we feel in our gut. Some of the people I heard from, like tonight, were opposed to the motion before us. They believe that handguns and semi-automatics should be allowed but controlled. They raised compelling reasons for this. I listened. Their examples gave me pause. More than that, I agreed and agree with much of what I heard. I agree, for instance, that current law-abiding citizens are not the problem. I have many friends and family, good people, who enjoy shooting and hunting. I also agree that there are a lot of things in our society that cause harm. As they rightly said, these things include cars, drugs, gangs, and mental illness. I found it incredibly encouraging that our conversations pointed to the need for prevention and action in these respects. Like my constituents, I believe we need to lessen deaths related to vehicles, opioids, and more. Indeed, there is a sense from those who wrote me that we have more to do in promoting the life and health of residents. But as much as I agreed with their positions, I had one fundamental disagreement. I think we have to do more on gun control. Why? Because I'm not okay that almost 10,000 people committed suicide with guns from 2000 to 2016 in Canada. I'm not okay that hundreds of other Canadians die each year, on average, from gun violence, murder. I'm not okay that almost half of guns recovered from homicides in 2010 were registered. I'm not okay that break and enter to steal guns is three times higher today than it was 10 years ago. Our country already has many checks and balances for gun owners and gun ownership. I don't deny it. But the numbers I shared above point to a bigger problem, that even our current precautions and policies don't go far enough. In other words, even if you factored out all non-registered guns from the equation, we'd still be talking about hundreds of lives lost to gun violence. Yet, it is true. Guns don't kill people. They do, however, make it easier for people to kill people, including themselves. With that in mind, I plan to vote in favor of this motion, to tell the federal government we can and we must do more. Not because I think most gun owners are bad people. There should be no judgment like that. Really, I come from a long line of farmers. My mom's heritage, dairy farmers in Quebec. My dad, from the rural areas north of the city. There were definitely guns there. However, I still believe that we have more to do to protect the people in our communities, and helping get more guns out of those communities is only one of the many ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
I think that Counselor Kylie put it well when he said that this is an issue that you feel in your gut. It's a very emotional issue. People have very strong opinions and feelings one way or the other. There's nothing like having a debate on an intensely emotional issue at 11 o'clock at night, our second five-hour-plus meeting in two days. So I'm just going to take a moment and try to take some of the emotion out of this for a moment. To be clear, the motion that is in front of us is not whether or not to increase gun control or ban certain types of weapons. The motion is whether or not Kingston City Council will send a letter to Ottawa advocating for changes to a federal bill, Bill C71. I would just like to bring us back to a conversation we have had many times around this horseshoe, is that the more letters we send from Kingston City Council, the less impact they have. That is why we need to think carefully about what are the issues that Kingston City Council wants to have a voice on. Not whether the issue is important. Nobody is doubting that this issue is important. There are a whole lot of other issues that are important. But the question before us is, is this an issue that Kingston City Council needs to have a particular voice on? In my view, there are two criteria for which Kingston City Council should write a letter and make a voice heard to the provincial or federal government. Number one, an issue that directly relates to the business of municipal government, our funding, our issues, the things that we deal with. That's why I was absolutely in favor of the first new motion that we passed tonight, because that absolutely checked that box. The second piece is if there was an issue where Kingston had a unique perspective, something very different, perhaps geographic, something that you know Kingston could say. I don't believe that this issue hits either of those. Doesn't mean it's not important. It's very important. I think there are great arguments that have been discussed tonight. But at the end of the day, is this an area where we want to use some of our political capital in sending off a letter to the federal government? In my view, the answer is no. We should hold our, I was going to say our ammunition, but I'm going to use a different word. We should use and we should save that voice for an issue where we need to be heard, not an issue where a bill is already about to be decided one way or the other. So I appreciate where both the mover and the secondary are coming from. I appreciate all of the comments, very sincere. But in my view, this is just simply not the place for us to be able to speak as Kingston City Council. So I will not support this motion. Thank you very much. And I'll ask for the chair back, if that's okay, Deputy Mayor.
Return. I return the chair.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the motion that has not spoken? Counselor Strout.
Thank you, Your Worship. It won't take long because actually, I think I agree with everything you just said. Do I have an opinion on gun control? Yeah, as a private citizen, I do. Does gun control come up as an issue in Sydenham District? Nope, doesn't come up. We live right downtown. I went to all the doors in Sydenham twice, and it didn't come up once. I've had zero input from my constituents on this issue. So my vote is either my personal opinion, which I don't believe is what I was elected to do, or it is a guess of what I think my constituents would want me to do on this. So therefore, I go back to what were we doing? Well, we're asking the federal government to strengthen Bill C71. Us, Kingston City Council. I don't really think it matters what we do on this issue. I'm sorry. Although I agree with many of the statements that were made, and it certainly is an emotional issue, I don't actually think that this motion delivers on those feelings and those gut feelings that people are using here. And it just unnecessarily divides us along urban-rural lines for no good reason. I'm really disappointed that this was actually brought forward. I really am. I don't know how to put the genie back in the bottle. You know, I would suggest, Counselor McLaren, on something like this, when you get a constituent, this is what I do. A constituent comes to me, and it's a federal issue. I have a good chat with them. We can share ideas, and I point them in the direction where I think they can make the most impact. In this case, you pick up the phone and you call Mark Garretson's office, he's a Member of Parliament, and you let him know how important this is to you. That's what your constituent ought to have done. That's what you ought to have done. That's what all of the councillors here that have an opinion on this ought to do. You ought to call your Member of Parliament, Mark Garretson, and tell him your thoughts or send him a letter. That's who needs to know. He is the one that represents us at the federal scene. He is, this is his job. He needs to do his job, and we need to tell him our opinions on that score, and that's it. Sending directly to the Prime Minister doesn't accomplish that goal. So although I may agree with many who might be supporting this motion, many of the arguments that are made are very, because no one, of course, wants to argue for more gun violence, but I do not agree with this motion. In this place, I agree with Counselor Ostroff. It's out of context, and I will be voting against.
Thank you. Counselor Doherty.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. This is not only an emotional issue, motion, and issue, but it's also very complex. It's complex. It creates a real rural and urban divide that concerns me. There are issues about the definitions of certain type of guns, and we need some clarity around that. It certainly is an issue of public safety, and we all agree with that. I would have felt better making this decision today if our Chief of Police was here and we could have asked some questions on how this relates to our community. I've been thinking about this, obviously, for days, and all of us have, and we've done a lot of research. It is a very heavy, very serious decision. And I'm also concerned that we're making this decision in a very short timeframe. Meanwhile, we should really be, if we are serious about something like this, the suggestion earlier that one of the speakers had, that we organize a committee may be something, but I don't, to explore, but this is a federal issue. They're going to be voting on it tomorrow. It's, I actually phoned some people in Ottawa to check on it, and I hear it may very well pass tomorrow. So for all of these reasons, it's very unlike me to, on a personal level, I find it very difficult to say that I'm not voting for this, but I will not be, for all of the reasons I just gave. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, Your Worship. My remarks will be brief and really specifically to the jurisdictional issues. I am supporting this motion, and I'm doing so because I do have a different interpretation of, you know, it's certainly not as clean as saying federal or provincial. This motion, of course, is referencing a specific federal bill, but I think that the question of whether or not we should be taking a position really does relate to whether or not we feel that there are impacts that we need to be considering, impacts on residents in the city. And I think in terms of impacts on our policymaking as a city and on where our energies and money get focused in the future. We recently heard and developed a community safety and well-being plan. We're now in the process of doing that. It's provincially mandated. We have the, and this is to do with the prevention of incidents of crime and violence. So we are obviously already actively trying to find solutions and trying to improve rates of violence and improve overall public safety and well-being. So, you know, it may not be as clear-cut as everybody would, or as direct as people might like to see it, but it's there. We have a responsibility, so I agree with my colleagues, and I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Senick.
Thank you, Your Worship. As we heard earlier, it's too late, and tonight it's really late already, so I'm only going to speak for a minute. I don't know much about guns. I don't like guns. I'm not a hunter, but I'm not supporting this motion. We didn't consult with the two gun clubs in town. CFB Kingston is our largest employer, and we have, like, shooting teams. We have teams in Kingston that go to Bisley, which is like the competitive world championships. We have, living in Kingston, former Canadian championships, and that's going to prevent any competitive target shooters from having weapons, you know, like, in their house, in the safes, doing everything as a law-abiding citizen. It's, you know, like, this is their sport. It's their sport that we're going to be taking away from them. And then also, too, like, the people that are into the shooting, the target shooting, the real competitive ones going to Bisley, they love their guns, right? Like, I ride horses, and to me, what I see is that the person with the gun, doing the target shooting, the competitive shooting, it's like they form a relationship with that gun. It's like with show jumping, it's the horse and the rider. With competitive shooting, like, they worship their guns. And, you know, maybe hunters do, too. I don't know. I just know about the competitive shooting, and we're going to be taking away their sport, and I can't support that, so I won't be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishes to speak? Counselor Hutchinson?
It seems to be a responsibility to say something under the circumstances. I appreciated the, I appreciate the, I mean, I'm divided. I mean, I appreciate the presentations. I appreciate the nature of the feelings of the people that were here, the feelings on all sides. I appreciate what the motion is trying to do. I'm not sure that it does it, but when the mover and secondary brought it to me or introduced me to it, I said, "Please don't make this about long guns. I don't want to have that discussion." So the problem is, to me, that there are guns out there that are not about hunting. Assault weapons, some definition of semi-automatic that allows you multiple shots, and handguns, which, you know, I mean, I think the whole issue of gun clubs and that is, you know, that's not for me personally, but the point is, I can understand why people are interested in it, but that can be prescribed by law. And to some extent, we heard it is. The problem is, is what Counselor Hill pointed out, the degree of damage. And that's maybe what we should be looking at in terms of weapons. How much damage in how much amount of time can this weapon do? And if we look at some of these incidents, quite a lot. A lot of dead kids in the States, for one thing, and people at worship in this country. And so I think that's what, if we're going to have an urban-rural divide on this, which I think is somehow inevitable, these are, this is what we have to look at. But we are not the body to do that. And so I find myself divided about this because I do feel there are certain types of weapons that shouldn't be in the public sphere, and assault weapons in particular. And because of the amount of damage they can do and death they can sow. So for me, politically, I don't want to be seen as soft on gun control. Simple as that. That's an urban issue. Everybody knows it. If you're in the rural district, well, quite the foot, you know, the shoe's on the other foot, pretty much entirely. So, you know, I'm not going to dislike somebody because they vote differently than me, however I decide, based on that, because this has been an intractable problem for decades, and we've slowly moved towards more controls and recognizing things. But, and it's sort of clarified for me to some degree, it's about the amount of damage, and that's how, that is capable by that weapon, and that's what we should be looking at. So I don't know if there's anybody else left, but I will do my thinking quickly.
Thank you. Counselor Chappell.
Thank you, Your Worship. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the citizens who participated in this. I think we've had the largest active engagement of any issue that's faced the city during this term of council. But, and I certainly appreciate many of the comments by my fellow councillors who are choosing to vote against this motion. What I'd like to focus on is what our role is as a city councillor. We, as members of council, have alternative methods other than council meetings like this one, in which we can advocate for matters outside our defined areas of authority. Grandstanding on issues we have no influence over nor are we elected to represent has no place in municipal government. Should a councillor be so motivated as to advocate on federal issues, let them be implored to do so directly with the elected MP or MPPs on behalf of themselves, or the elected representatives to which the matter lies in jurisdiction. How important of an issue this is, that the mover did not consider discussing the motion with our duly-elected MP, so it is seemingly unimportant. Because had he done so, he would have learned that Bill C71 is about to become law tomorrow, and his virtue signaling is about six months too late. Section 91 of the British North American Act of 1867 was in effect when this chamber was built. And the defining Canadian phrase, "peace, order, and good government," is an expression used in law to express the legislative objects of legislative powers conferred by statute. With this motion, council has gone outside its jurisdiction, and it's not good government. Imagine that this concept was paramount in the halls just at the dawn of Confederation, now seemingly ignored. I feel that if we give up on good government, you sacrifice peace and order, and I am not prepared to do that for you, Counselor McLaren or Counselor Hill. If you will be, you will find being called out on this offensive.
Point of order, if I might? I don't believe we're supposed to be naming our colleagues in a disparaging way.
So... I did not name them disparagingly. I did not name them in a disparaging way, I'm just saying...
Councillor Chappell, let me rule, then you can continue. I've stopped your time. So, there is nothing, there's nothing in our procedural bylaw that says you cannot name another councillor. That's fine. The one thing that I will caution is that you cannot speak to motive. So there are a couple of comments that I would say cross the line into motive. So that is the one thing that I will caution cannot occur. So it's a point of privilege, not a point of order. Councillor Chappell, you still have three minutes on the...
Certainly. I am not prepared to give up good governance, and if you find being called out on this offensive, maybe you need to stay in your own lane and respect the vote of the people in this room who elected their federal MP to represent them on this issue. These matters of assisting, asserting all constituents' moral support is a great indecency of governance. As a councillor, like citizens in the city of Kingston, we have an elected MP to whom you are welcome to extend your moral support. Neither I, as a councillor, nor any of you as councillors were elected to use this vehicle to speak on behalf of citizens in this manner. The fact that anglers and hunters are here to state that you do not speak for them should have your attention, because on this issue, you cannot speak for them. They can represent themselves to an MP, just as those who call for the theft of private property as a stronger controls can advocate to an MP. Please show me that we, as a council, have a mandate... Please show me where we have a mandate to declare a moral position of a municipality on a topic outside of our governance, or swiftly apologize for subjugating the self-advocacy for those for and against this motion as persons who are using this council as a platform beyond its jurisdiction. I want you to respect their vote. They did not vote for you to speak on their behalf on both the criminal code and gun legislation. Perform your governance role you were elected to do and focus on municipal issues. And that is my comment, and that is my stance.
Thank you. So everybody has spoken. councillor McLaren, you have the last word. Okay, very good. So with that, we will call the vote on new motion number three. And that loses by a vote of six to seven. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, mr. Clerk, ask for minutes, please.
Move by councillor O'Sannick, seconded by councillor McLaren, that the minutes of city council meeting number 2019-13, held Tuesday, April 16th, 2019, be confirmed.
And that carries. I have some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? councillor Chappell.
Fellow councillors, the primary business of city council meetings is to address matters affecting our community under our jurisdiction as set out in the Ontario Municipal Act. As these matters are numerous and at times complex, the discussion or debate of non-jurisdictional issues should be limited in consideration of timing of our council agendas and potential commitment of staff resources and matters outside of direct authority. So in effort to strike a balance in this matter, I will be submitting a motion to the effect that the city's procedural bylaw be amended to reflect the introduction of any non-jurisdictional matters before council will require a vote before doing so. And this will be presented to the clerk for the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business? It is 11:40. This is a good plug for starting earlier in the evening. 11:40, can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Moved by councillor Bohm, seconded by deputy mayor Hill. Oh, yeah, the bylaws. Sorry. Sorry, guys, we're not going anywhere yet. Ask clerk Ross for bylaws, please.
Move by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Hutchison. Oh, sorry, before I start reading those, I just want to draw to council's attention that bylaw number three, that deals with the council's start time, is to be amended accordingly. So I will, and so will be approved as amended. So move by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Hutchison, that bylaws one through nine, including bylaw three as amended, 11 and 10 be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
Move by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Hutchison, that bylaw number three, that clause 11.36 of bylaw 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaws four through six three readings.
Please vote. That carries.
Move by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Hutchison, that bylaws four through nine, 11 and 10 be given their third reading.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Ostroff.
One more, please.
And we adjourned. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, can you put the second L back in my name?